Which is a partner of Moody's. And in this role, she analyzes the economic impacts of climate change on corporations and financial markets. And she studied at Johns Hopkins School's Advanced International Studies with a focus on energy resource in the environment as well as international finance and economics. Previously, she worked at the U.S. International Trade Commission assisting with macroeconomic research on the impacts of international trade on the U.S. economy. And so I'm very appreciative of Lindsay and of Moody's. And so at this time, I would like to turn it over to Lindsay for the presentation. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Ted. And hi, everyone. Thank you to the Kansas Government Finance Officers Association for having me here today to talk about physical climate risks and their impacts to U.S. states, municipalities, and local governments, and also how to build resilience against those hazards. My name is Lindsay, and as Ted mentioned, I'm the Director on the Global Client Services Team with 427. Just to quickly introduce myself, I currently live in Washington, D.C., where I have been since 2010 when I graduated college. I thought I'd stay in D.C. for maybe half a year and pick a graduate program and move on. But instead, I began a career here in economics and started working on analyzing the impacts of international trade policy on our economy. I did eventually go to grad school to study the nexus between environmental policy, economics, and finance. But before that, one of the first things I did here in D.C. was help the Washington International Trade Association organize their first Governors and Ambassadors Reception, where U.S. governors could meet and mingle with trade representatives and ambassadors working in the various embassies here in D.C. I love these type of events where local government officials reach well beyond their jurisdictional boundaries to learn about new economic opportunities and make the effort to collaborate beyond borders. What I'm going to talk about today reminds me a lot of that reception. I'll be talking about shifts in the much broader financial landscape that have the potential to affect you in Kansas. There are very broad international market trends and not to mention changes in the global climate itself that are driving the incorporation of environmental data into financial decision-making. These market trends have already caused changes and will continue to cause changes throughout the financial system. Changes underway from the highest levels among regulators and central banks for fund managers and down to individual project finance will impact local governments going forward. The main focus of my talk today is about physical climate hazards, things like water stress and heat stress and floods, and how a firm like 427, which specializes in analyzing the financial and economic impacts of physical climate risks, provides data to a broad range of financial market actors of all stripes, so they can better understand where physical climate risks are in their portfolios and their investments, and how to build resilience against those physical climate hazards. Today, I'll start by talking about physical climate models and the types of decision-useful information they can provide. So your Climate 101. From there, I'll talk about broader market and regulatory changes and what's already prompted regulators and other financial stakeholders to start talking about and considering climate and other environmental, social, and governance issues. And then from there, I'll talk, provide a bit more detail about the type of analytics that 427 provides, leveraging data from the global climate models that I'll discuss. And then finally, I'll talk about the use cases of our data. So how are various market and financial actors using it? And how are they understanding their physical climate exposure? But then also, how to identify opportunities to build resilience against those. In the final section, I'll also review how Moody's is starting to use 427's data and what it means for state and local issuers. 427 is an affiliate of Moody's, and we're a leading provider of data, market intelligence, and analysis related to physical climate and environmental risks. We analyze physical climate hazards that pose an immediate threat to investment and loan portfolios, including floods, heat stress, hurricanes, sea level rise, water stress, and wildfires. I'll get into more detail later in the presentation, but at a high level, we're taking information available in global climate models, transforming them into risk scores and analytics for those hazards at the center of the screen. Our expertise is in translating that data into decision-useful and actionable metrics so that investors can better understand the exposure of a wide range of asset classes, including bonds, real estate, infrastructure, companies. And we provide data at a very granular scale, so we can analyze addresses or latitude longitude coordinates and provide risk scores for those hazards you see in the center there. Our clients range very broadly, from investors to asset managers, commercial banks, companies themselves, finance agencies, government agencies. And our clients use this data to perform portfolio analysis. They monitor risks as their portfolio holdings change over time. They conduct due diligence for new investments, and they're using this also for reporting, so to report about their risks in their portfolios. They're establishing internal standards for high-risk assets, so weighing the risks and expected returns of investments and resilience, and weighing the cost of building resilience against hazards like floods or wildfires. At the most basic level, all our clients are interested in understanding their exposure to these hazards and are interested in being proactive and understanding how to meet forthcoming regulatory requirements around disclosing climate risks and environmental, social, and governance risks. I'll spend the next couple of slides overviewing the climate science and the models that we use. These are called global circulation models, or GCMs. And I'll talk about why scientists are concerned about the trajectory of warming that we're on. Global circulation models, these climate models, take into account data and information from many different types of physical sciences. So atmospheric chemistry, physical geography, ocean science, and biogeochemistry. And they take in information about global carbon dioxide levels and levels of other greenhouse gases. And that provides us with information on how changes in the concentration of those greenhouse gases in the atmosphere will change our climate. We use climate models that are created through the IPCC process. This is the U.N.'s Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. The IPCC has been around since the 1980s and is a globally coordinated effort among research institutions to produce the peer-reviewed science and scientific models that we leverage in our physical climate risk scores. Some of the climate model outputs are on the screen. Nearly 200 countries have agreed to attempt to limit warming to well below 2 degrees Celsius to attempt to avoid catastrophic climate changes. They chose this science-based target based on information in these global climate models. As you can see in the graph on the left, we've already observed warming reaching approximately 1 degree Celsius globally. And some of you may be aware that the IPCC issued a special report on climate change and land last year, which showed that we've already reached more than 1.5 degrees of Celsius of warming on land. It should be no surprise to many of you, given recent hurricane events in the Southeast and wildfires in the Western U.S., that we've moved away from a historical climate to a new climate, one that is now already characterized by more frequent and severe acute weather events. Besides acute events like floods, hurricanes, and wildfires, chronic events like rising temperatures and rising sea levels are also already occurring and expected to worsen into the future. These events are both potentially deadly and costly. Large disasters in the U.S. in the last five years have cost us $525 billion. We see anomalies like some of the ones shown here, including above-average cyclone activity in many regions across the globe, including in the Gulf of Mexico this year. Hurricane Laura in September caused storm surge in Louisiana and Texas that reached nearly 20 feet and caused an estimated $12 billion in damage. Early estimates of losses from property damage and business disruption from wildfires in the Western U.S. are expected to be between $4 and $8 billion. Kansas has also been hit by hazards like extreme rainfall and flooding, as well as extreme heat and drought in the recent past. In 2019, Lakeside Village had $15 million of infrastructure damage alone from flooding. This doesn't even include damage to private homes. And there were $3.8 million in federal flood insurance claims filed. Some dams were damaged and some were breached entirely. Wastewater treatment infrastructure didn't have enough capacity, and combined sewage overflow systems caused 1.3 billion gallons of sewage to flow into rivers and streams. Beyond large-scale events, smaller-scale events also have an impact. Between 1996 and 2019, the U.S. experienced 1.36 million events like heat waves, wet weather, high wind, and flooding. Kansas alone had 5% of the U.S. total, with more than 64,000 events in that timeframe. For a state with less than 1% of the U.S. population, 5% of these events is certainly an outsized amount. On this slide, I want to describe a bit about the greenhouse gas emissions scenario that 427 uses in our analysis and our scores. You can see here the outputs of all of these different global circulation models and four different representative concentration pathways, or RCPs. These show the impact of the concentration of carbon in the atmosphere. We rely on RCP 8.5, which is known as the worst-case or business-as-usual scenario of unabated emissions. The reason we use this RCP scenario is you can see in our timeframe of analysis, which is 2030 to 2040, there are not meaningful differences in the outputs of these RCPs. Any policy changes we make as a global society to reduce our emissions won't change our temperature outcomes in 2030 to 2040 because there's already a certain amount of carbon in the atmosphere, and it will continue to cause changes even as we reduce emissions. And there are even more reasons to choose the business-as-usual worst-case scenario when thinking about climate change from a risk perspective, as we do. There are additional uncertainties in climate models that are currently under very intensive research but are not yet incorporated into the models that we use. You may have heard the term "climate tipping points." These are feedback loops that might accelerate climate change, like the melting of permafrost areas, which could release methane, which has 25 times greater warming potential than CO2. And so that could significantly accelerate our rate of warming. Other tipping points with uncertain time horizons include the impacts of deforestation and wildfires in the Amazon and Southeast Asia and melting ice sheets. Many of you may have seen the headlines about ice sheets breaking apart this summer, and we had a 100-degree day in the Arctic, which is extremely rare. So what does this all mean for you? There's no risk of sea level rise for Kansas, obviously. Well, Kansas is exposed to some other climate hazards, and I'll get into more detail on those in a few slides. But beyond the direct impacts of those hazards, financial markets are changing how they view climate. They're starting to incorporate climate information into their considerations for credit, which can impact your cost of capital, for one. One of the main questions I want to address for this audience is how capital markets are starting to incorporate these risks. There are a number of signals coming from financial regulators, investors, and credit rating agencies already. Over the last few years, climate risk considerations have moved from the fringes of finance to center stage. In 2015, the Task Force on Climate-Related Financial Disclosures, or TCFD, flagged the importance of disclosing physical climate risks and risks around energy transition, so moving away from carbon-intensive industries. In places like Canada, the EU, and Australia, support for TCFD or TCFD-like disclosures has been growing. A number of countries already require disclosures. In New Zealand, banks, institutional investors, and insurers are going to be required to start disclosing in line with TCFD already. Beyond TCFD, other initiatives like the EU Action Plan and Sustainable Finance and the Network for Greening the Financial System are pushing investors to take physical climate risks into account. I'll just note that the U.S. has been somewhat of a laggard compared to other countries, but the trend is still in the same direction. In the U.S., pension funds and asset managers drafted a letter to the Federal Reserve and the SEC calling on these regulators to require companies to provide more information about physical climate risk so that investors can better price assets and make better decisions. The signatories to the letter view climate change as a systemic risk, meaning it could affect everybody that participates in the financial system, from regular folks who have a 401K to asset managers, to pension funds, and state and federal government. The Commodity Futures Trading Commission just issued a report in September describing how climate change represents a systemic risk to financial markets. Reactions to the report by major banks, including Citi, J.P. Morgan, and Morgan Stanley are available on the CFTUC's website. 427 provides a range of climate information, including flood return periods, heat-stress metrics like cooling degree days, which are a proxy for future energy demand, and water-stress indicators like future water supply and future water demand. We also recently released a wildfire indicator showing areas of the globe that will have wildfire conducive conditions in the future. You can see our risk scores here for U.S. counties. And what we've done is downscaled the data from global climate models, leveraging work by NASA and other U.S. agencies. And we provide a 0 to 100 risk exposure score for the various hazards that we analyze. The only ones missing on this screen are for sea level rise and wildfires. But I'll talk through some of the results at a high level here. On the top right, you'll see water stress. No surprise there, California and much of the Southwest is already highly exposed to water stress, and we anticipate that to worsen into 2030, 2040. Exposure to cyclones in the bottom right, again, the Gulf of Mexico has had unprecedented record years for hurricanes this year, and along the eastern seaboard, there's a level of exposure there as well. On the top left, you'll see exposure to heat stress, and the Midwest is shown to be quite exposed to heat stress in the future. I'll talk about it in more detail in a couple of slides, but Moody's did an analysis looking at where there is debt outstanding in the U.S. and found a high correlation between debt outstanding and heat stress in the Midwest, so it's shown to be particularly exposed. In the bottom left, extreme precipitation. Last year in 2019, I'm sure all of you remember well, the floods have already started occurring, so the extreme precipitation metrics that we're providing out to 2030, 2040 are actually bearing out on an even earlier timeline than we initially expected. Here, I've zoomed in to be able to show you our results for Kansas. Three of the six hazards that 427 analyzes really stand out for Kansas. These are extreme precipitation and flooding, which we've already discussed, as well as heat stress and water stress. 427 flood and extreme precipitation scores for counties in Kansas show some areas in the eastern part of the state where the flooding occurred in 2019 are expected to have much higher volumes of rainfall during precipitation events. So sometimes nearly 50% more volume of rain during extreme rain events, as well as an increase in the number of days per year where rainfall volumes exceed the historical 95th percentile, and those are an additional seven days per year. Heat stress in Kansas has not only threatened public health for vulnerable populations like the elderly, it can have direct economic impacts by also threatening livestock and agricultural output. Crops themselves can be damaged by extreme heat, and on top of that, labor productivity declines in extreme heat, both for outdoor and indoor workers, actually. Heat stress can also impact businesses by causing stress on the electrical grid as more buildings simultaneously run air conditioning and transmission lines have reduced efficiency in extreme heat conditions. Heat stress can also more quickly cause depreciation from repeated or prolonged heat waves. Over time, as heat stress worsens, buildings currently without air conditioning may have to incur the added expense of adding new HVAC systems. This in particular could increase costs for schools and other municipal-owned buildings. With respect to water stress, in 2012, drought in Johnson County threatened agricultural output, which contributes $750 million to the county's economy, as well as 8,000 jobs. I'll note that while our wildfire indicator is not shown on this slide, two of the largest wildfires in Kansas's history occurred in the last five years. The hot and dry conditions conducive to wildfires are becoming more frequent and severe. 427 can also analyze financial impacts at different spatial scales. What I just showed you were results across an entire administrative boundary, like a county border, or we can also do city borders, so this has implications for bond performance. But what we can also do is analyze infrastructure assets or individual facilities like a school or municipal building and provide the levels of hazard exposure for those. It's, of course, extremely helpful to understand where critical infrastructure assets like power plants, power lines, reservoirs, or roads are exposed to these hazards. While it's great to attract private investors and infrastructure and other real assets like real estate offer diversification to investment portfolios, and infrastructure in particular offers stable inflation-linked cash flows, it's easy to understand from recent history that physical climate risks can negatively impact operations and the expected returns of those infrastructure assets. And investors are increasingly concerned about this. While the long life of these assets may have shielded infrastructure investors' portfolios from short-term volatility in the markets, portfolios may be exposed to unpriced risks posed by a changing climate. So investors are starting to pay attention. You all also might be familiar with what was coined one of the first climate bankruptcies, the bankruptcy of the utility Pacific Gas and Electric in California. PG&E was found liable for the devastating 2018 campfire in California. It pled guilty to 84 counts of felony involuntary manslaughter and is expected to pay $58 billion in damages. Beyond wildfires, hazards like future drought and water stress can threaten the operations for thermal power plants like coal and natural gas that require a lot of water for cooling. Moody's Investor Service found that 11 major U.S. utilities, representing over $31 billion in rate base, have extreme risk to water stress, which has already caused some utilities to make the decision to retire capital-intensive generation facilities early, like the Tulke Plant, shown here, which provides power to Texas and New Mexico. In that report, Moody's found that Evergi, which provides power to 1.6 million customers in Kansas and Missouri, have infrastructure assets with the highest level of exposure to heat stress. Heat stress can degrade the performance of transmission and distribution lines. It can incur increased maintenance and operations costs, and it can require the early retirement of these large capital-intensive facilities. 30% of Evergi facilities also have high exposure to water stress. As I just discussed, for the Tulke Power Plant, thermal power plants require a lot of water for cooling, and so they may have to consider retiring these water-intensive facilities early or renegotiate water use rates with other stakeholders like municipalities and agricultural users of the water. The majority of Evergi's electricity still comes from coal plants, and their energy mix is supplemented by other thermal sources like natural gas, both of which are susceptible to water stress risk. Now, I want to tie these climate analytics more explicitly to our use cases, how investors are using the data to analyze financial impacts to assets like companies, real estate, and bond performance. I'll also touch on Moody's view, basically how Moody's would intake climate-related analytics and information that we provide for their credit opinions and their other research reports. Moody's Investor Service has started to incorporate our data explicitly into their research reports and soon-to-be their credit ratings. They've issued a number of reports using physical climate risk data from 427, including the report referenced on this image on heat stress in U.S. municipalities. As I mentioned earlier, they took our data on heat stress and married it on their data with where debt is outstanding, and the Midwest is shown to be quite exposed from both the heat-stress and debt perspective. To break down further what Moody's does, this is sort of an oversimplification of their process, but just to describe it simply, for instance, we can look at the warmer temperatures, how they might increase the severity of droughts and wildfires, and even heat waves, which can have an impact on businesses, and how those impacts to things like crop yields, energy demand, stress on the electrical grid, higher mortality rates, the lower productivity from heat stress, and even the cost of implementing resilience and adaptation strategies will impact the financial performance, so lower revenues from maybe lower tax revenues or property tax, higher expenses, expenditures for recovering after disaster events. higher expenses expenditures for recovering after disaster events, and even increased debt. So this is just a simple schematic to show you how they think about these climate impacts to state issuers. To be more explicit about the types of impacts that we at 427 and Moody's are thinking about, we can think of impacts to the economy, so loss of revenues in productive key industries, business interruptions from, you know, loss of electricity if the grid goes down, loss of taxable revenues of local enterprises. We can also think about unexpected things, like outmigrations from areas that are susceptible to extreme events. So you can think about if there are more frequent and frequent wildfires in certain areas that people might consider moving or living in an area that's not prone to those wildfires. Other than that, we've already talked a bit about impacts to infrastructure and how those can lead to higher expenses and not just operations and maintenance costs, but also higher levels of capital expenditure. The most recent update about our partnership with Moody's is that 427 data is now available in CreditView. So in addition to the usual credit information that's available in CreditView, financial market actors can now also see climate data from 427 and also environmental, social, and governance data provided from another affiliate of Moody's called Vizio Iris. So, or VE. VE is a European-based company, and they provide that view on ESG, environmental, social, and governance measures. As I mentioned earlier, 427's expertise is in working with physical climate models and drawing out those decision-useful and actionable metrics from them. But thanks to our partnerships throughout Moody's, we're taking our metrics to the next step and quantifying the financial impacts more explicitly in dollar terms. Through tools available through Moody's Analytics, like their Probability of Default Tool, known as EDF, we will have climate-adjusted metrics, so that investors can analyze the additional risk and financial impact from climate hazards like sea level rise, heat stress, water stress, and wildfires. And here, shown on the screen, Moody's is also using the data at the facility level. They can look at specific addresses or locations, and with their understanding of an asset's importance to future cash flows, get a better understanding of the potential financial impact born from these climate hazards. They've used this address-level data, most recently in a report they published in September on climate exposure in real estate investment trusts, as well as the credit opinion referenced on this slide, which is for commercial mortgage-backed securities. If you're curious about other use cases of our data and our partnership with Moody's, I would encourage you to visit the Insights page on our website, and you can also feel free to reach out to me directly. I know I focused a lot today on the regulatory pressure and viewing all this from a risk perspective. But what I really want to leave you with is that this data really represents an opportunity to build resilience. A 2019 Pew Poll found that 62% of Americans believe climate change is having an effect on their communities. You can demonstrate leadership by conducting climate risk vulnerability assessments, which are the first necessary step to building resilience. 427's data can help identify where vulnerabilities are in infrastructure, in municipal buildings, and in schools. Using the data, you can identify which hazards to tackle first, be it floods, where you might have to harden infrastructure or raise up buildings, or maybe it's heat stress, where you have to plan for protective measures for vulnerable populations. At the end of the day, what starts as a risk identification measurement exercise is ultimately just the first part of a greater exercise in resilience building. And there are a lot of examples out there demonstrating what state and local governments are doing to prepare for the relevant climate hazards in their area. Beyond identifying vulnerabilities and making plans, some states and cities have started institutionalizing an officer or a committee responsible for monitoring and implementing resilience measures against climate risk, which is another important early step. That person or committee can take responsibility for the cost-benefit analysis of resilience measures and identify financing, grants, and funding, be it at the state level or even reaching up to the federal level for financial assistance. There is an opportunity for learning from what other states have already done, and plenty of examples in the US of states reaching across borders to work with their wider regions. Climate events don't by any means respect our jurisdictional boundaries, and there are plenty of opportunities to build resilience to climate changes across broader areas. Again, for those of you who are curious to learn more about 427's work, as well as our work with Moody's, I'd encourage you to check out our website and feel free to reach out to me by email as well. For now, I think we still have some time left to address audience questions, so happy to take those, and thank you for listening.
We ask that if you do have questions, please do not hesitate. You can enter them into the chat, or you can weigh in. Why, this is a lot of information. Thank you so much, Lindsay. You had, I had no idea, right, how much climate really affects our day-to-day world every day and the data that goes behind it. So please, please, please ask some good questions from whoever might be sitting out there.
And this is Peter Glick from Moody's, the Relationship Manager for the Midwest. And I'd just like to remind everyone that the analysts will be speaking in an upcoming session, so you can ask them more directly how this data is incorporated into ratings.
I think you've stumped them.
I know it's a lot of information, and these models are certainly complex, and it's a lot to take in. So we have plenty of research and white papers for those of you that are interested in diving.
I mean, from a local government, I'll just, I'll ask this question, but from a local government perspective, where, what are the, what are the kinds of things that, because this is a lot, right? And they probably have to focus their attention on what really can be impactful for them in their day-to-day kind of analysis. But where would you, where would you recommend them spending a lot of their time? Or what kind of data would be really helpful as they're starting to analyze, put together budgets, figuring out where to allocate dollars, et cetera, et cetera? Where are some starting points, in case they're not able to grasp all of it?
Totally, yeah. So I think that there's a lot of really great examples that, like I mentioned, are already ongoing in the US, where cities and states have done local vulnerability assessments and put together adaptation plans based off of that. So obviously, the hazards that impact one state or another are going to vary somewhat widely. Not everywhere is affected by sea level rise, not everywhere is affected by hurricanes. And so, starting with, I think, what has shown in our data to affect Kansas would be flooding and heat stress and water stress. Those are, it's a good place to just start by that narrowed-down hazard list. What other states and local governments are doing sometimes is appointing someone at the government, be it the, you know, a local mayor's office, or at the state level, the governor's office, someone who's in charge of, you know, known as the Chief Resilience Officer. So someone who is the principal responsible person for gathering all this data and deciding what are the next steps going forward. It's really helpful to have that centralized with a single person. When it comes to thinking about resilience and adaptation measures, what actually needs to be done? How do we build resilience against floods? How do we adapt to future heat conditions? There are a number of things that can be done, and a number of studies that I think could be of interest. So happy to share those reports. But the adaptation responses are going to be inherently local, because everywhere that we are in the US has different, you know, funding mechanisms and requirements and different ways of going about things. So really, really depends on, first of all, the hazards that they're facing, and then the financial and institutional responses that they can implement.
Is there any, I mean, we always, when we put these slides together, was there any other information that maybe wasn't included here, but any new publications, any, you know, basic information overview that could start the conversation in the local government, or in the local departments, or in the local budget offices, or whatever that is, that can really help walk? Like, you say, let's do a vulnerability assessment, but what is that, and how do we do it, right? So are there some tools or tool idea or toolkits that could be helpful to local governments as they're trying to even implement those things?
Definitely. So at the national level, there is a, it's the US Climate Resilience Toolkit that's available online, and it's a great resource and a great place to start to gather some climate information, but also to witness other use cases. What are other states doing? What are other local governments doing? And that's a great way to start formulating a plan. The Georgetown Climate Center on Adaptation also has very similar resources, so technical guidance and technical assistance on how to use climate data. 427, on our website, we have a Climate 101 White Paper, so it's called "Using Climate Data." So basically, the types of decision-useful information that can come out of this climate information, yeah.
Okay, finance gurus out there, your chance to ask some questions. And, but if there's not, then we will let you get back to your Friday. So last chance, you can either put it in the chat, or you can unvideo, turn on your video and unmute yourself and weigh in really quickly. Nope. Okay. Lindsay, thank you so much. We appreciate you being here. I will let everybody know that the slide presentation will be available for everyone that's registered for the conference. It'll be available at the end of the conference. We'll package it all together. We've been collecting that as we've gone along. We know that we will, you'll be joining us again next week, the attendees for the third week of sessions. Generally speaking, the sessions are on Thursday, 9 to 10, and then again at 10:15 to 11:15, and then one session on Friday. So we hope you'll be able to join us. Next week, we will be talking about achieving cybersecurity resilience. We will be talking about municipal bond issuance in Kansas. And then on Friday, we'll have a demonstration of Lease Vision, a program used by BKD. So we hope that you come back and you tune in. Ted Clemmons started off at the top of the hour, and Ted, do you want to say anything final as we end the session?
Thanks, Paula. Yeah, I just want to say thank you so much, Lindsay. This was excellent. The information was excellent, and I really appreciate it, and I know the other members do. So this, it was a great session, and thank you very much.
And we greatly appreciate Moody's. They've been a long, 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 long-time sponsor of Kansas-Jeff Wey. And no conference would be the same without Peter at his table outside the door. So we appreciate that Moody's is always willing to support Kansas-Jeff Wey and finance professionals across the state. So we will hear back from them again in another session later in the conference. But talking about this climate and trying to build that resilience is really an important topic. So I encourage everybody to look at the resources that are available, either at all those things that Lindsay mentioned, and all those resources, and that you become a little bit more educated. Otherwise, we will see you all next week. Thank you very much for attending, and enjoy the rest of your day and your weekend.
Thank you.